All phones on.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Almost said good morning. Good evening. This is Porta County Board of Commissioners Monday, June 26, 2023 meeting. We'll start with the opiate resolutions. We have the Moraine House, 320 Recovery Juvenile Detention Center, and the Portage Recovery. You have some report in there?
Do we, can we do all of these together, Scott?
You can, because you've already, we approved them at the last meeting.
Do we need to give a recap of what they are?
We do not.
Okay. I move that we accept opioid resolutions for Moraine House, 320 Recovery Juvenile Detention Center, and Portage Recovery.
Why don't you just go in the town, the Reader's Digest version of what we're doing here?
Okay, all righty. Well, for those of you who may not be aware, we have received $2.5 million in opioid funds based on some litigation that was won. And that, we're receiving different dollar amounts over 16 years, and we've chosen to take the $2.5 million, divide it by 16, so we have under $160,000 to grant every year for those 16 years. We already have $100,000 allocated for all 16 of those years, and that's for the pro-coordinator for the sheriff's office. And this year, we are looking to grant another $60,000. At this point, we've identified $50,000 in grants. The first one is for $10,000 for the roof on the Moraine House, which is a halfway house located in Valparaiso. The second one, 320 Recovery, is located in Chesterton. They got a two-for-one match, so they're getting $40,000 from the state as long as they can get $20,000. And Chesterton is granting them $10,000, and we're granting them $10,000. And that is to hire a full-time recovery coach. Juvenile Detention Center, we actually have $20,000 for them. There is $10,000 for Juvenile Jeopardy, which is a program that is brought into the different schools. They wanted to expand that to all of the schools in Porta County. And another $10,000 for adult mentors for, for the kids in the juvenile recovery program. And then the last one is Porter's Recovery Association for $10,000, and they are establishing a SOBAR. So SOBR, SOBAR. And it, they are going to be leasing out a second bay where they can have a gathering place for those people who are in recovery. They're going to start off in a smaller capacity, and they're hoping to be able to expand that to 24/7 or anytime for those people that are in recovery. They can, it can be a gathering place where they can go instead of hanging out with people that can tend to lead them astray. So the total of that is $50,000. We still have another $10,000 for this year. We are hoping to be able to find an organization or some sort of either preventative or a recovery organization in South County, because all of these were either in Center District or in North County. And that's where we are right now. So, does my motion still stand, or do I need to?
Your motion still stands.
Okay.
We need a second.
Second.
A motion to approve the Moraine House 320 Recovery Juvenile Detention Center and Portage Recovery for opioid, opioid funds to be released to them. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Valparaiso Lake Area Conservancy District, Blackhawk Beach Stormwater Project, payments in the amount to the following: Antero Group, $16,000; Mendenhall &amp; Associates, $5,678.96; and Grimmer Construction, $3,305. We'll entertain a motion to release those funds.
So moved.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the release of funds to Ontario Group, Mendenhall &amp; Associates, and Grimmer Construction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Puppy Mill Ordinance update. Scott?
So the reg, last time this was on the agenda, there was some concern about whether the state, what the state was doing with the legislation. I don't believe that legislation ended up having legs, so I will have the puppy mill ordinance back on either the next agenda or the agenda after that for first reading.
Venue rental policy.
So the venue rental policy is the commissioners had asked, and we had some meetings concerning it about adding some mandatory rental policy provisions for our county, our county venues. I put that together in the formation of a resolution entitled mandatory rental policy provisions for all Porta County venues. In a nutshell, if, if an event is open to the general public and serves alcohol, meaning it's not a private event, and it serves alcohol, the county venue is going to provide colored wristbands for every person that served an alcoholic beverage. The patrons of the event should be required to wear the wristband while drinking alcoholic beverages. Adults 18 years of age and older shall be admitted. Individuals 17 years and old, 17 years old and younger will only be admitted with parent or guardian. For all events, conduct and dress code. Appropriate dress for family-friendly government venues require nudity, visible underwear, visible pasties are not allowed. Clothing that promotes profanity, violence, drugs, or criminal activities are not allowed. Profane language, fighting, acts of violence are prohibited. Music noise must not leave your event area. The music must be family-friendly, not include profanity or offensive language. I wrote it up in such a way that all of our different venues have obviously significantly different contracts, but these would be mandatory provisions that would need to be added to all of those venue agreements if the commissioners were to pass it.
Any discussion?
Has anyone talked to Dave Bagnell about music not leaving the venue or the event area, stuff like that?
For the fair?
Concerts out at the expo.
I have not.
But it's, actually, isn't the entire property the venue? Isn't that there?
Well, I can hear it from my house sometimes.
Pardon?
I said I can hear it from my house sometimes.
Well, we can, we can exempt the fair if we so choose. Or not.
We can. I mean, it's slightly different. They're not, it's a, they're not exactly the same type of relationship with a, with an individual coming in to rent the venue. They're, they're great standing contract, so it's just slightly different circumstances.
How are we going to enforce this?
An individual venue, the people in charge of the individual venues are going to have to institute this. And that's why it needs to go in the actual venue contracts themselves. So if you're having a general admittance venue or program of some kind, and you're going to serve alcohol, then here's the ages that are going to be admitted, or the ages that will need a parent or guardian.
So like, my problems with this are just the tricappa Taste of Valparaiso thing. They serve alcohol. My kids go over to that, try all the food. They're not drinking. They're under 17. I don't feel like I need to go with them.
This would require you to have to go.
Some of this stuff I agree with, but not all of it.
I don't, I don't, I don't know why a juvenile would be at an event that's serving alcohol.
They can't, like I said, they just go to taste food, and I've got tickets to something, so I hardly think a tricappa event is a dangerous scary place for a 17-year-old.
I don't know. I've never, I've never been there. I don't know.
Do we want to table this until our next meeting, so we have a little bit more time to think about some of the different organizations before we pass this?
Oh, we, yeah, sir, there's nothing. Scott?
If we're, we, obviously, as a governmental entity, we have to be careful. We're not going to be able to pick and choose the events that we're either going to have these rules for or not. So that's why it's, that's frankly the reason why I drafted it the way I did. If it's a private event, these rules don't apply. If it's a general public admittance that serves alcohol, then that's where the age requirement comes in.
I have a question. What about volunteers, like high school kids volunteering at chess around the table or something like that?
Julie, Julie. Now, we'll answer your question, but in, in the future, please, yeah, just raise your hand. I'll call you up here, and you can, but that drives Kathy nuts, because she has to, you know. What was your question again? I'm sorry.
Volunteers, like high school kids that volunteer at various events.
Like waiting tables and stuff?
Like my daughter's in Key Club. She's 15, and they do things like that.
Yeah, we, you know, I mean, this is obviously a discussion we need to have, and it's an issue, and Scott brings up, we, you know, where you get into troubles.
You have to be consistent with that.
Yes, be consistent. You start cherry picking, you run into trouble. But at the end of the day, that is a government property. We are not a private bar or private restaurant. We, we need to make up our minds. Are we going to run it like they would in the private sector? Are we going to run it as, you know, the public owns those, those properties? And I, and I would guess that there's a certain expectation that's what we're going to allow and what we're not going to allow in there. And, and serving, serving alcohol to the general public that, that is going to allow children under the age of 18 years old in there without adult supervision, I personally don't have a problem with that. I know that that in some, in some venues, that's going to cause an issue, but, you know, and if we lose that, we lose that business, we, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we lose that business. Because I think there's a huge amount of liability that you take on when you're serving alcohol to the general public, and you're allowing children to come in there unsupervised. That's just my, that's just my opinion.
So my 17-year-old son can't take his 17-year-old girlfriend to the Christmas show at the Opera House unless I join them. I'm just not for that.
Well, we, I, I, I totally agree, Laura, that it, it throws a complexity on this that we haven't seriously considered in the past. But we don't, we don't live in the past today. It's, things are more complicated. There's more liability now, and, you know.
Do we have some giant liability for that?
Well, I mean, I think what Jim's referring to is just having alcohol around children and the issue that surrounds it all. I think, I can't put my finger on something specific, but that would be the issue, generally speaking.
I mean, again, if you're going to, if you're, we're going to manage venues that are going to compete with the private sector. We need to make up our mind how we're going to do that without creating a lot of liability here. And we don't own those buildings individually. They're owned by the public. And what does the public expect from us?
Free speech, for one.
Well, what's, what's free speech have to do with that?
What do you mean?
We're talking about alcohol.
There's just a lot here that you're trying to control, that.
No, we're trying to.
As a parent, I can handle my kids myself. I don't need the government to tell me where they can and cannot be and what people can wear.
I don't think the government's trying to tell anybody where they can and cannot be. What the government's trying to say is we're responsible for these properties, and we're responsible for, you know, you know, who's coming on to those properties. And that's, that's what I'm saying. We don't run restaurants and, and entertainment venues here. We're, we're a government. And we need, we, if we're going to get into that business, we have to decide how much liability we're willing to take on to do that. That's, that's all I'm saying. It's, it's, it's complex. I'm not necessarily, I'm not saying you don't have a great argument. I'm just saying that we, you know, we have to decide if, if we're all in, we're all in. If we're not, you can't be halfway here.
I would see it if we've had lots of problems or something, but we haven't. We haven't had any problems that I'm aware of.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm just going to say it. I'm just going to say it. We, you know, 10 years ago, we weren't having drag shows that were inviting children in there at 13 and under as we do today. Things are changing, and we have to prepare ourselves for that change.
That's right.
That's, nobody likes it, but it's a reality, Laura. It's just, we have to prepare for it. I'm not, I'm not criticizing your, your position here. I'm just saying, it is, we have to decide who we're going to be here and what liability we're willing to take on.
As you said before, we already prohibit profanity, and you can't belude, and we just very, have very different thinking on this.
But we said here and argued.
I think a parent can decide whether or not their child should be at a drag.
Yes, well, we said here and argued about it for a meeting, or at least a couple of meetings, about, you know, the virtues of allowing, you know, free speech of grown men dressing up as women in a drag show and encouraging children to show it for free. We, we would have never had that conversation a decade ago in county government. Never. But it's coming. So we have to prepare ourselves, you know, for the, you know, for the inevitable.
For those crazed 12-year-olds that are running around on their own without parental guidance.
Well, well, we're going to table this, and we'll have, we'll get with you, Scott, and talk about, and with Lori as well, and, as well as Dave Bagnell, and determine where we want to take this from here. We, but a decision's going to have to be made. This is a little bit more, this is complex. There's, everybody has an opinion. I'm just staying on my side of it. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, after the institution of county government, not my own opinion. My own opinion differs greatly than what my opinion is looking after the institution of county government. And that's strictly from a liability standpoint. Anyway, with that said, facilities, Daniel Sullivan, is Dan here?
He is not here, but he gave this to us to present, so.
Okay. You want to go ahead and do that?
So.
Or I can do it? You can do it?
We had a, we advertised, we had an RFP for architectural design and for construction management services for the Health Department expansion and remodel. And we got three different responses to the RFP. And in reviewing those, we had a sealed bid, and we opened up those sealed bids at our last meeting. And of the three, this was the organization that came in at the lowest cost, Cordigan Clark. I don't know very much about them. I have never heard of them.
Yeah, I believe they're out of Lafayette, actually.
Yeah, their, their local office is out of Lafayette, Indiana.
I mean, they have a, they have a, they have a lot of experience, a very full resume of, of services. Though all the bids were close, they're certainly, certainly qualified to do the work, and they were the lowest bidder, so.
How are we handling SB4 as it relates to this?
We're breaking this up into two phases. The first phase is to move the Coroner and Veterans Administration to voters' registration. And then once, and now we have a new Health Department Director. Once they are ready to talk about their space needs, then this architectural firm will come in and do a needs assessment and help them to determine the appropriate layout for whatever their needs are.
So they're not, so my understanding, they're, they're not going to start planning?
Correct.
Until that, those conversations are had?
So these bids that we got cover?
Both.
Yeah.
Right.
I'll make a motion to hire Cordigan Clark.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to hire Cordigan, Cordigan Clark. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Auditor, Dave?
Yeah, these are both the second reading. The first one's for the COPS grant. Looks like the sheriff's here.
Yes, the first one is an ordinance establishing, the first one is an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the COPS Community Oriented Policing Services Technology and Equipment Program Invitational Solicitation Grant, second reading.
And we would love an explanation of what that's all about.
Okay, well, it's, the big part of it is saving lots of money. Okay, this grant is going to pay for about, what'd we say, $225,000, $223,000 of IT equipment that normally would fall onto the county to pay for. That's upgrades in laptops, different upgrades for our drug unit, computers, laptops in our cars, storage for our computer data, meg unit computers, things like that. It all comes up to a total of $223,000 for that aspect of it. The other remaining money is going to go towards the subscription fees for one year for our FLOT camera systems.
For your which?
FLOT camera systems.
And what is that?
Those are the LPRs.
Which are the?
What's that?
Which are the?
Yeah, sorry. License plate readers.
Okay.
Yeah.
He could have said that right.
I guess I could have said that. Yeah, okay. Sorry.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the COPS Technology and Equipment Program Invitational Solicitation Grant on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the reimbursement of COVID-related expenses from FEMA grants, second reading.
Yeah, the majority of this is going to go from the Health Department to the Expo Center to reimburse them for costs of using their venue during COVID for all the different various reasons. But that's what the majority of this is going to go towards.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the reimbursement of COVID-related expenses from FEMA grants on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. And Development Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson? We have a Unified Development Ordinance pertaining to Section 5.69 Telecommunication Facility Standards and 5.70 Telecommunication Facility Height Limit, second reading. Could you give a little background on this, what this is?
Telecommunication ordinance, it's our, well, everybody will look at it as the cell tower ordinance that we have out there. Originally, the UDO had it as only in commercial and industrial districts for a special exception and nothing in the residential on that. I was trying to push for it to be special exceptions all the way across in any zoning district. The original UDO did not get adopted with that, so the first part changes it so that a cell tower can be heard in front of the BCA with a special exception within any zoning district. The other item discusses is beyond the use of the cell towers. It, it goes into more of a broadband-type situation where we allow it within an institutional zoning district, because even schools have microwave that bounces back and forth between each one of their schools. So we set it where height standard of 150 feet, if it's in an institutional district. It is a permitted use with a review by Development Review Committee and staff.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Unified Development Ordinance pertaining to Section 5.69 Telecommunication Facility Standards and 5.70 Telecommunication Facility Height Limit, second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. How's that for quick, huh? We come to the portion of our meeting where we have any other matter which may properly come before the commissioners. Yes, ma'am? Could you, you come up and speak in the, and give your name, and, and you don't have to give your address, just what town or city or part of the county.
Hi, my name is Elena Shook. I'm a Morgan Township, Valparaiso. I'm just wondering, two quick questions. What is the timeline for the revision of the new solar ordinance? And, and will we, as a public, get an opportunity to ask questions and give our input before it's passed?
Okay, Scott?
So, the new solar ordinance is in process. We've had, actually had a couple-hour meeting last week with myself and the Planning Director and one of the county commissioners. We're working on some ideas in a draft. The way that would come out the first time would be at the Plan Commission Meeting where the public hearing will be held. And at that point in time, that's when everyone would be able to ask their questions. And that that's at the stage before it gets sent to the commissioners. So at the Plan Commission stage, it's, it's an advisory Plan Commission, so it's either recommend for approval or denial, or to not send, because it's not ready. So that Plan Commission Meeting will be that opportunity for everybody to get their hands on it, be able to look at it, and be able to ask questions. And that would be the best meeting for that to occur at. That's before it actually even comes out of Plan Commission and goes to the commissioners for their.
Okay.
They will then also have a public meeting, a public hearing, and a ability to ask questions. But that Plan Commission Meeting would probably be the best and the first opportunity.
Okay, and that's, there's one coming up, I know.
It's not on that agenda.
Not on that?
Correct.
So it'll be probably next month sometime?
Elena, we had, we had targeted the end of August at that Plan Commission Meeting for our, our first draft of that, for that, our first.
Okay, so we'll just keep an eye out for the end of August. Okay.
And then should that get passed on to the commissioners, then first reading would be in September.
September.
At the September commissioners' meeting.
Okay, so we have a little bit of time here, too.
Right.
Okay, thank you. And another question, is, is there any current status with the next year's solar application? It's been very quiet. It's kind of like that feeling when your kids are in the next room, and it gets quiet, and you know there's a disaster, an impending disaster. So just wondering.
Scott, the application is under review at this time. That's the answer.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other, anybody else have, would like to address the commissioners? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Deborah Silvert. The three commissioners have been in receipt of an email from me. Laura, I'm so sorry that you emailed me back, and then I sent another email last evening, so I don't know if you saw that or not. I did sort of a layperson's deep dive into SEA4, because I have some very serious concerns about it. I have copies, because I don't have Scott's or, you know, some of the other people's emails, so I'll give those to you.
Thank you. Was, was this part of, was this the latest email you had sent us? Is this the content?
This is last night, yes.
Yeah. We, we will make sure that this gets in the hands of the Health Board and, Dr. Stam.
I sent it also to them.
Oh, they have it, then, okay. And we'll, I will, you know, speaking for myself, I'll make sure they do their best to answer as many questions that, that they can at this time. We're still, we're still kind of in the early stages of this, so I, I don't know how much they can answer at this point, but.
I hear, and I, I really appreciate it. I'd beg your indulgence that I would like to read it.
Sure.
So that the public can.
Sure, I got nothing.
Hear it, because I can't disseminate it any other way.
We're here for it.
So, thank you. Okay, so if you don't know, SEA4 is the latest version. It stands for Senate Enrolled Act IV. It's the latest version of the Senate Bill IV. And I'm, I'm not going to read verbatim what I have here, because it is long, but basically, several sections of the SEA4 are just simply repealing parts of Indiana Code. If you don't know what Indiana Code is, that's our state law. Indiana Code, mostly law that is found in Title 16. And if anybody's interested, I do have a few more copies, hard copies of this, or if you give me your email, I can send you. if you give me your email, I can send you an electronic document and then you can click on the links because I have a lot of links in here. All of these revisions to the state law become effective July first, which is coming right up here. And for the most part, all the revisions are accommodating new provisions of the SEA four amendments. And so, if I'm reading this as a layperson, I'm not an attorney, I don't have a law background, but it, it appears to me to be a foregone conclusion that the SEA four is going to be the new normal in our state as of July first. The bill itself, the legislation itself, SEA four describes itself as an act to amend the Indiana code concerning health. So it seems peculiar, peculiar to me that there's any talk at all about counties, individual counties opting into this SEA four. I don't know what that means. Does that mean that each of Indiana's ninety-two counties is going to have a choice about whether it's governed by Indiana state law or not, as it would be amended by SEA four? To me, this, this idea of opting in, there's some sort of weird coercive or illusion of choice that's being put in front of the people and I, it just feels to me as though there's coercive intent in this legislation. I gave out a bullet, bullet point list, which was captioned digest. I put the bullet points in. When I was searching on the Indiana government legislative site to try to find this material, like what's the text of the SEA four? I wanted to read the text. And I kept clicking on details. And when I clicked on details, it gave me digest, which was not what I was looking for. I was looking for the text of the bill. So I finally found that, wasn't, wasn't so easy. I captured, captured here the bullet points in my document. There's a lot of material that's in the SEA four that was not bullet pointed, so that was curious. I told you in the, in the document how to find the actual text. But here are some of my concerns, specifically in section six. And when I mention these sections, these are all SEA four. In section six, they detail what our core public health services. There were twenty-three services that were specifically enumerated, which double, actually double more than, double what was legally required by the state to the local health And I've got references there that can be looked at. Before we would opt in, as I read through these services, I can't imagine which of the twenty-three enumerated services we're not doing. We're doing them. We're already doing them in Porter County. So I don't, can't see why we want to be mandated to do them. It just seems peculiar that we should give up local autonomy to be mandated by the state to do things we're already doing. But what I was more concerned about was that the twenty-third one read as follows. The prevention and reduction of chronic illnesses including the following: obesity, diabetes, cardiovascular diseases, including hypertension and hyperlipidemia, hepatitis C and cancer. This is in the context of prevention, a core public health service. It's, it's defining a core health, public health service is the prevention and reduction of these chronic illnesses. And that's seeing how we can possibly prevent and reduce chronic illnesses and be legally required to do so by law when we don't even know, you know, in many cases, what are the real causes of these. You know, here we are being mandated to an outcome, which just seems to me impossible. And especially since some of these are correlated to lifestyle choices, so I was very concerned about that. My feeling was that individuals should, should be able to continue to have the freedom to make their own lifestyle choices, even if those lifestyle choices are like what I would think of as bad. You know, I don't smoke and I'm very careful about my diet and I don't engage in promiscuous sex, so, you know, those are my lifestyle choices. Maybe somebody else chooses a different lifestyle choice. That's, that's kind of on them, you know, like, it just seems like it's, it's not a very free, if it doesn't infringe on my health, it's not, it's not granting them their freedom of choice, in other words. And maybe I'm not being, I think I'm clear in the way I actually say it. Section fifteen, here at the State Department, this is very concerning. I issue guidance to the local health departments on this title and any rules promulgated by the State Department to assist with the uniform application of public health laws in Indiana. I don't even know what to say about this. Rules that can be made at any time by administrators downstate, not elected officials, but just rules that are made. And here, on a local level, you know, we're, we're going to have to be participating in the uniform application of public health laws that are, you know, coming out of these rules. Where, you know, there's no, there's no autonomy on a local level. So I think, I just think that this is really opening a Pandora's box. That kind of language is, to me, just dangerous and very threatening to liberty. Section fifteen, or that was fifteen, nineteen applies to counties that opt into the new funding paradigm. And this entire section here, this entire initiative, literally puts our local health board under the authority of the state, even though, and there's a little subsection, and it says, "A county that accepts the funding to provide the core health services does not transfer any authority in operating local health departments to the State Department in return for the additional funding." They're telling us, nope, we're not going to give up anything. But in view of some of the rest of the language in the legislation that I cite going on in this document, this clause is not giving me any comfort. You know, you may say that, but I'm not seeing where that's true. Section twenty, there's another one that I'm very concerned about, health, and I didn't, I didn't, I looked at every section, but I didn't tear apart every section. There were other things that I thought, okay, that's not a big deal. These are the things I felt was, were very, very concerning. Public health personnel of local health departments shall perform additional duties prescribed by the rules of the State Department. Okay, so it's in direct contradiction to the thing I just said, where, you know, opting into this, you're not going to give up any local autonomy. No, because in the very next section it says, "No, your people, your local health personnel shall perform additional duties prescribed by the rules of the State Department." I don't know, you know, it's pretty plain to me. I'd like to know what the additional duties might be, what might the state make new rules about? We could have mandatory testing, quarantine vaccines. These rules are all administrative and these are not created by any elected, elected officials. These are created by health department authorities. Section forty-three, there's, here we see that for this purposes of funding beginning in the state fiscal year, starting July first this year, and in each state fiscal year thereafter. SVI, there's an acronym, SVI, means the Federal Centers for Disease Control Social Vulnerability Index. Hmm. And the county executive, that is this group of three county commissioners here, must vote to accept additional funding and to provide core public health services. Now, this is the first time anywhere in SEA four that they make any reference to any federal agency. I think maybe they forgot to scrub that because I think it may have been in, more prevalent in a previous edition of the bill. I don't know, I didn't go backward. But I do not know why there is any reference whatsoever made to this SVI, the social vulnerability index. I don't know what that, what it's referencing, what it means. You can't find it anywhere else in SEA, SEA four. So I couldn't help but come to the conclusion that the whole legislation has been conceptualized by people who supported and endorsed and enforced the federal lockdowns and mandates coming out of this COVID-nineteen-ish fiasco. There, I gave a link to the governor's public health commission video, which was recorded or this commission met June thirtieth of 2022, so just a year ago. And if you watch this thing, it is clear, it's an hour and a half long, so it's, you know, commitment on your part to do it. But if you, if you watch that, it's pretty darn clear that the goal is to centralize public health directives throughout the state of Indiana and remove local control. In section forty-three, you see the acknowledged involvement, involvement of the CDC. And even though it's not plainly stated in the SEA four, it does appear there's a carte blanche delegation of authority to the CDC by way of the Indiana State, Downstate Department of Health, which is going to undermine the counties. And there's a whole administrative rule process that can play out that we folk don't ever even get to see because it's happening up in the administrative levels. They can effectively move goalposts, should they wish, anytime they wish, and that's very concerning to me. Section forty-four is talking about the local board of health opting out of the new funding, but nowhere in the, in the language of that section is there any provision made for legacy funding, as it's been described by the health department, if you were here for the health department meeting. There's no, no language that this legacy funding would adjust for inflation. And that's going to be a concern because, I mean, inflation's a thing and if, if we opt out and decide to go with our legacy funding, you know, we're going to dig ourselves into a fiscal hole with the health department and that's, that's terrible. I mean, if, if it's about public health, why would you write legislation that wouldn't account for, you know, inflation for the delivery of public health services? It's not, it's not about, I don't think it's about that. But actually, Commissioner Blaney did tell me that there is not. Indeed, she does not see it. There's no provision for inflation written in the opt-out, so that is very concerning. Section fifty, this is concerning the local health boards who will opt in. But here is, this is very concerning, this is a quote from SEA four. If the State Department determines that there are reasonable grounds to believe that a local board of health is not complying with statutory directives or rules adopted by the State Department, the State Department may suspend funding until compliance is achieved as determined by the State Department. So there. Again, I would have to say what precisely what statutory directives and rules are we talking about? It could be anything, in my opinion. Administrative rules are not laws, they can be changed rapidly, as I've said, at the discretion of health department. These are unelected officials with no accountability to the people. I don't think it's a very far stretch to imagine another emerging public health threat leading to another round of restrictive, restriction on individual freedom. Almost done. The sections forty-five, I'm sorry, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, all of these contain reference to statewide standing orders as pertains to emergency stock medications that are dispensed and may be dispensed currently in schools, and they remove liability for those emergency stock medications to be dispensed. Now, currently, our health code, Indiana IC sixteen, Title sixteen, the Indiana code, which is mainly having to do with health, it's four hundred and one pages long. It's not easy to find. My printer was decided to have a little bit of a meltdown, so I was printing. I'm going to go through that like I'm, like I went through SEA four, which was only thirty-some pages, so four hundred and one pages to go. But I'm not, I'm so worried about this, folks. Anyway, the current law provides only for epinephrine, that's your EpiPen, right? Severe allergy. Albuterol, that's your emergency rescue inhaler, and naltrexone, no, no, not, naloxone, which is Narcan, which is for opiate overdose. It stops the, it blocks the opiate receptors. Those are the only emergency stock medications that are right now provided for by law in school. But here, with this language, SEA four is going to open many other possibilities. You can imagine what those might be, folks. Vaccines, nicotine replacements, birth control antidepressants, you know, any hormones, as whatever might be determined necessary to, to assure our improved public health outcomes. All right. The last section of this act is section sixty. It's very brief. I will read it in its entirety. Here we go. Quote, "An emergency is declared for this act," unquote. That's section sixty. That's all a section sixty. No further text, no explanation. I'd like to know, what emergency? Why was this emergency declared and who declared it? Because that single sentence can potentially justify anything the State Department of Health decides to impose on the counties. So I don't see how anybody can think it's a good idea to opt into this, especially in view of this last section. See it for yourself, it's there. When I'm reading through the health statutes that I'm finding in Indiana, Title sixteen, Indiana code Title sixteen, like I said, I haven't, I'm going to go through that with fine tooth comb. But, you know, on a quick perusal, four hundred and one pages, "Public health authority." Those three words appear over and over and over throughout the Indiana code Title sixteen. I'm, I was kind of shocked, actually, public health authority? I would have thought that in a free country built on principles of individual liberty, a public health department would be a resource for its people and not an authority. I believe we need to immediately rethink where we have been and consider dialing back both the statutory language in IC sixteen, I think this is a bigger problem than SEA four, I truly do, and the philosophy behind this, if we want to maintain any semblance of our individual freedom, health freedom specifically. I think that a health, a public health needs assessment should be immediately completed by our local health board. We need to know our own local needs, and I still have not. I've been asking since June sixth to hear raw numbers, percentages and rankings regarding Porter County's public health issues of tobacco and vaping use, obesity, mental health, immunization, decreasing life expectancy, deaths of despair, infant mortality and exercise opportunity. All I keep hearing is, we don't look good on these things, really, but I, I want to know what the numbers are. The other thing that was very misleading when we had the health board meeting was that, you know, this is a county issue right now, but every statistic that was cited and every point that was made about how in such desperate public health states we are, all of the, all of that was being supported by state statistics. I don't know what they are for Porter County. And I would venture to guess we're doing a heck of a lot better than many parts of our state, and I think there are some parts of our state that are probably doing very abysmally, and that's dragging our whole state down. So I think that's something to think about. I think that we should deny the urge to micromanage our counties to the state of Indiana, but I think that the CDC and the World Health Organization have made no secret of wanting total control of our health, as if that was even a possible thing. I think the unstated goal is control at the expense of individual liberty. And I believe that during this time, centralizing our health system plays right into that goal. Merely stating that counties are free to choose does not mitigate the many references in the legislation itself that clearly are coercive. I think this is a time to strengthen our local government in a way that supports individual freedom and not to acquiesce to government control. Thank you so much for your indulgence, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just wondering, Scott, and you, I'm not asking you to answer this right now, but some portions of this happen automatically on July first and some only happen if we opt in. Do you, can, would you be able to differentiate which portions of this bill are going to be in effect on July first, whether we opt in or not, and which ones will apply to us in a situation where we opt in or don't?
Yeah, I could do that at the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Or whenever we're dealing with SB four.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak to the commissioners?
Hello, my name is Tim from Porter, Indiana. I really dislike speaking in front of people. I despise politics. You just look at the word itself, break it down, poly is many, ticks, blood-sucking creatures. I don't, I don't, not saying you guys, I'm basically speaking federal and state. A lot of politicians, they like to say one thing and do the other. They're two-faced, they lie all the time. And as far as this, I don't know anything about this SB four, whatever, but I'm just wondering if the people that are putting this out there, are they the same ones that three, four years ago told us to wear a diaper on your face everywhere you go? Are they the ones that told us, you better get vaccinated for grandma? It's a bunch of lies. So whatever this bill coming up, if the same people that lied to us back then, if they're putting it out now, I don't trust them. I mean, if you want to wear a mask, you can wear a mask. Sometimes I wear a mask just to be safe, but that's, that's a choice we have to make, that we can make. You don't have to wear a mask if you don't want to. You don't have to get vaccinated if you don't want to. It's called choice, it's called freedom. Thank you.
Tim, uh, Tim?
Yes.
Real quick, your last name.
It's O.
Expelled that, spelled that.
Spell that? T-H-A-T, I'm sorry, O-U-G-H.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Well, thank you all very much for taking the time to be here this evening. Have a nice evening.